People are handing out flyers. In the neighborhood. Not a good one.
All right, and five, four, three, two, one.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the June 17th, 2024 meeting of the Long Meadow Select Board. I'm Select Board Acting Chair Josh Levine. I will be confirming that all members and persons anticipated in the agenda are present and can hear me. Members, when I call your name, please respond on the affirmative. Mark Gold.
Here.
Dan Zorko.
Here.
Beneath Haimavati.
Here.
Andrew Lamb.
Here.
Staff, when I call your name, please respond on the affirmative. Lynn Simmons.
Here.
Mike Barbieri.
Here.
This open meeting of the Long Meadow Select Board is convened in person and via Zoom webinar as posted on the agenda and Town's website identifying how the public may join. There is no chat or Q and A function. All of the materials for this meeting are available on the agenda posted on longmeadowma.gov. The public is encouraged to follow along using the posted agenda unless I note otherwise. This meeting will feature resident comment. For residents attending the meeting in person, please raise your hand when we get to the comments section of the meeting and I will call on you to approach the microphone. For residents participating in the meeting via Zoom webinar format, please use the raise hand icon at the bottom of the screen. The meeting moderator will promote you to panelist, unmute you, and give you permission to speak. Join the webinar by phone, dial star nine to raise your hand and star six to mute unmute. Residents who wish to speak will identify their names and addresses only. Each individual is afforded three minutes for comments. Please note that this meeting is being recorded and that some attendees are participating by video conference. Please remember to mute your phone or computer when you are not speaking. If anyone in attendance is recording this meeting, please announce yourself now. All right, I'll do the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, start with announcements. Board and committee vacancies. Applications are open to serve on appointed Long Meadow Boards, committees, and commissions. Interviews will be held at the Select Board regular meetings in July and August. To learn more about the roles and responsibilities of the committees and to fill out an outline application, please visit longmeadowma.gov/civicalerts. Juneteenth, town offices closed. Town of Long Meadow Municipal Offices and Recycling Center will be closed on Wednesday, June 19th in recognition of Juneteenth. Volunteers needed. The Town of Long Meadow is looking for a few volunteer citizen scientists to help us collect water quality samples at Cooley Brook once a week this summer. Led by the Connecticut River Conservancy, this is a fun way to get outside and contribute to a healthy Cooley Brook and Connecticut River. For additional information, please visit longmeadowma.gov/civicalerts. We have listed on here, but tomorrow night, the Middle School Building Committee is holding a forum at the Adult Center at, is it six or seven?
Seven.
At seven o'clock to talk about the process to get where we are on choosing potential plan for the middle school. And I think it's a good way to interact with folks on the committee and ask questions and hear the thought process. And I will just say, for my announcement, I welcome Andrew. Congratulations on your election. And then I will open the floor for reorganization. There's a, Dan?
I'd like to make a motion to nominate Beneath Haimavati as chairperson.
Okay, I'll second that. Any discussion?
I would only say that I think Beneath would do a great job, but I was actually thinking if it were up, in my opinion, I thought Mark would do an incredible job as well, just because he's got a great deal of experience. And I don't know how many times you've been the chair in your long tenure, Mark.
Once.
One year and how many years?
Once. One year.
And how many years have you served?
Fifteen. Okay, well, we have a motion for Beneath on the floor at the moment. I would say, Beneath, you've been on a year now? I think I was a chair after my first year. I think it's a good, it's a good learning tool and it's an important part of seeing how the sausage gets made. So I think you're, I think you're ready for it and so I'll support you. Anything else? All right, all those in favor? All those opposed? We have any motions for a vice chair?
I move to appoint Dan Zorko as vice chair.
And I'll second that. Any discussion? All right, all those in favor? And any motions for a clerk?
Well, as is tradition, usually the newest members are clerks, so I move to appoint Andrew Lamb as clerk.
Second.
Any discussion on that? All those in favor? Okay.
All right. Thank you. So just real quickly.
You want to swap over?
Sure. Want to.
All right. Congratulations.
All right, just wanted to say real quickly, obviously an honor to be serving as chair now. We have a lot of challenges that we're going to have to face here, especially over the next year, where we're looking at addressing infrastructure needs, looking to deliver on a new middle school, and just overall looking to set Long Meadow up for the future. And so I'm excited to work on all these problems with this group here. You know, I think the Select Board is at its best when we're working together as a team. And I think those of you that know me know that I don't like doing things in a certain way just because that's how they've always been done. If there's a smarter way to do things or a better way to do things, then I'd like to adopt that. So I'd encourage everyone else on the Select Board, staff, if you have ideas for how things can be done better, please let me know. You know, we can discuss it if it makes sense. I would love to adopt that to make things run smoother. So thank you again, guys, for your confidence in me and I'm looking forward to the next year of working together. So let's move on to the next agenda item, which is resident comments. Do we have anyone here that would like to make a resident comment? Mike, do we have anyone?
No one on Zoom.
Online? Okay. All right, then we'll move on to interviews and appointments. So we have a few interviews scheduled for today. All of the folks interviewing today are actually seeking reappointment, so hopefully we don't have too many surprises. Most of the folks here have also served the town in various capacities over the years. So let's start off as, I don't see Dave Marinelli here, right?
Maybe on Zoom.
Do you have a note from him or anything?
Town's meeting.
Not Dave, okay. So we'll skip Dave and we'll go to Arlene Miller. Arlene, if you could come up to the mic.
Which appointment is this for?
Well, sorry, so we'll cover both at the same time. How about that? So, Arlene, if you could, so Arlene's seeking reappointment to the Community Preservation Commission as well as the Recycling Commission. So if you could just please start for the record with your name, address, and then maybe tell us a little bit about why you're seeking reappointment and maybe the work that you're looking forward to doing on these committees.
Wow. So I'm Arlene Miller, 68 East Greenwich Road, Long Meadow. We've lived in town, my husband and I and our family, since 78 or 79, so about more than 40 years. And I'm seeking reelection, you want to talk about both at the same time?
Yeah, sure, yeah, sure.
So Community Preservation is simpler. That's been not in place as long as the recycling program, so we'll talk about that. It's just a committee that's a pleasure to work with. Half of the group is back here being, looking for reappointment. This is an opportunity for the town to use money, which is generated locally and from the state, to do special things within the community. And it's restricted, as you know, to certain items. It can't be just used for anything. And over the years, I just looked it up because I want to have some number in case you asked me a question. We've spent about $6 million on this project to improve various aspects of this community, projects that probably would never have been done if we had not had this opportunity. So it's very interesting. It's challenging in some times, but I think it's a good resource for the community and it's been a pleasure to work on that committee.
Great, thank you. Anybody have any questions for Arlene?
Sure.
Okay.
Looking at her to talk. Do you have your eyes on any particular projects you'd like to see tackled or anything in town that you think could use CPA money?
Well, I have one that I think is a need and that would be affordable housing. And one that I think would be wonderful, and that would be a renovation of the old town hall to make it very special.
Interesting.
Go ahead, Andrew. So I assume the affordable housing bucket of the CPC funds has been accumulating because it's difficult for us to find ways to expend that money. What ideas does your commission or in your experience have there been to use that money?
Very few. That's why we haven't spent the money. We have probably, we have well over $200,000. Steve will know more the detail on that. Not easy. We haven't had, we were looking for partnership with the Housing Authority. We haven't had a lot of input with that. We did do a study years ago about what the potential might be in Long Meadow and it was a study. And we do have one project that's active and that's with the Adult Center where we help people stay in place. We supplement needs to keep their homes solid for a period, you know, it's not huge. It's like a limit of $10,000 or something per applicant, but it just helps people get over hump. And that's the very little thing that we've done with that money. However, given, I don't know what's going to happen with the middle school. Property might open up. Opportunity may open up. We've talked about trying to partner with Habitat for Humanity on a lot anywhere in town. We have our eyes on it. We talk about it, but we haven't done anything.
A follow-up question would be, I don't know what the state match for the CPC funds is now, but I imagine it has gone down.
It has.
Do you ever, do you know what it is and is there ever like rumors that it might go even lower to the point where it's not even a match anymore?
I think this year is the lowest possibly. When the first year, Long Meadow, I believe it was 2006 when we adopted it. We adopted a very low, you could either do between a 1% or 3% local tax. We did a 1%. And at that, in the beginning, we were getting 100% match.
Right.
This year, I believe it's as low as 13 to 14%.
And that's what it's been for a little while, but I'm.
Yes, but so what's happened is it's a pot, as you maybe understand. And so the more communities that join, and it's becoming very popular, like Springfield just joined a couple of years ago. So, I mean, cities like that.
That's bigger, yeah.
So that dilutes the pot. And housing, it's funded by exchanges when people buy houses. It's the deed exchange. And the market's been slow in terms of houses moving. So the pot's smaller because of that and because of more use in the pot.
So theoretically, if a community were to stop participating in the program, the pot could, I mean, the percentage could theoretically go up?
Say that again, please.
Theoretically, if some community has decided, you know, this isn't really worth it for us because the match is only 10% or 8%, then it could theoretically go the other direction, not down.
Yeah, but actually it's going the other way. More towns are joining all the time. Because if there is extra money, the state sometimes gives excess money in the budget to community preservation.
Those supplements.
Yeah, to supplement. So it's been a very, I think most communities are very thrilled to have it. I mean, some of the projects we've done are, really would never have happened without that kind of money. It's the kind of projects that go, get shoved to the side. And so I think, Stephen, these guys will, me and you, talk to them. So recycling, well, that's sort of my passion, as you might have guessed. But in fact, I brought with me calendars, if anybody wanted a calendar, but you probably all got them in the reminder on Thursday, the 13th, right? And I just must say that the June 13th is not a trash, the 16th is not a trash holiday.
Nineteenth.
June 16th.
For June 17th.
The 19th is not a trash holiday. So people, even though it's a federal holiday and the recycling center is closed, there is still trash on the normal day that week in case people are confused. Oh, don't, oh, wait a minute, they have to pay for those.
Great. Any.
So the Recycling Commission, to me, is a very valuable committee in the community. We have no budget, but we are an advisory group. We try to educate people about recycling. We try to work with DPW to assist them in any way we can about recycling and to help the community do a better job. We can all do a better job. We do a very good job, but we can always do a better job. And I can, I'll answer any questions you have about that.
Great. Any questions?
Not a question, more of a comment, or really a compliment to Arlene. I know you've obviously been around town for a while. You've been involved with so many things and especially in recycling. To have someone like you with your leadership within recycling, I think the city of Springfield or Hall of Hanbun County you were in charge of.
That's true.
Just impressive and nice to have you, you know, making these contributions, so.
Thank you.
I just wanted to say that.
Great.
Well, thank you so much for joining us tonight and reapplying and we'll be voting on your appointment in one of our upcoming meetings. Thank you. All right, so next, do we have John Bresnahan here? All right, John. So John is seeking a reappointment to the Conservation Commission. So if you just please start with your name, address for the record, and then just let us know why you're seeking reappointment and what you're looking forward to working on.
Can I just make a suggestion? Do you want to bring everyone up for each board? We can do, if Patrick.
Oh, is everybody okay with that?
We've done that in the past, if we.
Pulling folks up from full board. All right, yeah, we can do that. So also Patrick Carnahan and Richard McCullough, if he's here?
I don't know if he's here.
Okay. All right. So we have both of you, start with your name, address, and then talk a little bit about why you're seeking reappointment.
Good evening. John Bresnahan, 47 Falmouth Road. Currently serving as chairman of the Conservation Commission. Been on the commission now for 25-ish years, somewhere around there, so quite a while. And it's been enjoyable from a couple of different standpoints. And beginning, the role was very defined by the wetland regs in the state. And now I can see over the last couple of years with the makeup of the commission, we've kind of expanded our role a bit. We're reaching out and looking at trail development, trash pickup, and really taking care of all the resource areas within the town. And that's been very fulfilling in a lot of different ways.
Great, thank you.
Patrick Carnahan, 311 Farmington Road. And I echo John's commitment to greater stewardship for this Conservation Commission. We still do our mandate, what we're supposed to, but we are expanding out a little bit and increasing educational opportunities and educational awareness. And also trying to get a better handle on the total resources, not just the specific water resource, but there's a lot of other resources within the watershed and within our purview that we're trying to look at, maintain, manage, and also educate the public about.
Great, thank you. Any questions for these folks? I guess you're not easy.
Only 25 of you.
Can I publicly endorse Patrick?
And I, John, is a good chairperson.
Well, thank you so much both for reapplying and for joining us and we'll be voting on your appointments in the next couple of weeks.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. All right, so.
For the, I believe the Council on Aging is up next. There was somebody who was accidentally missed from the memo, but I believe we have Mary Ann Squire here as well.
Okay, great. Yeah, if you can line up. And Sandra McFadens?
Thank you.
All right, great. Thank you both for joining us. If you could start with your name, address, and tell us a little bit about why you're seeking reappointment.
Good evening. My name is Sandra McFadden and I live at 91 East Greenwich Road, almost next to the Millers here. And I've been on the board of the Council on Aging Board for three years now, having served as chairman for the past two years. And I thoroughly enjoy serving on this board. I think in the past couple of years, we've revived some benefits for seniors in town. We now have 6,000 seniors in town, which is a good number. We've revived the medical equipment, usable equipment. And we've also revived the senior trips using our Long Meadow van. So I've been in Long Meadow all my life, lived here. I'm a product of a Long Meadow school system and I'd like to give back to the community.
Thank you.
Then I'm going to be a newcomer because I didn't come until 69. And I've enjoyed my tenure here. And I've been on the Council on Aging for three years.
Sorry, could you just start with your name?
Oh, sorry.
Sorry, sorry.
I figure you know me by now. Mary Ann Squire, I live at 39 Albemarle Road.
Great, thank you.
I've enjoyed Council on Aging. It's been an eye-opener in many respects. And we've brought to the table many new things and some old things that we've revisited. So the Senior Center's been an awesome place to get off the ground and running. And we've highlighted lots of new things and revisited some older ones. I've enjoyed it and I've reapplied, as you can see, so I hope you consider that.
Great, thank you. Questions from the board?
This is what happens when we get, you know, I guess, reappointment interviews.
Okay.
We know all these folks, so thank you both so much for coming. Appreciate it. All right. Stephen Weiss, Historical Commission?
Good evening.
Good evening. So, you know, the drill, name, address, and a little bit about why you're seeking reappointment.
Sure. Stephen Weiss, 25 Hilltop Road. My wife Carol and I have lived here almost 38 years now. Before I get started with me being on the Historical Commission, I also, I don't know if this is appropriate or not, but I would put in a plug for Arlene Miller, who's a colleague of mine on the CPC and John Bresnahan as well. We have a terrific, terrific committee in there. John is the Conservation Commission designee to the CPC. I started on the Historical Commission, I think it was 12 years ago now, because I wanted to learn more about the town's history. It turns out we have a wealth of history in this town. The Historical Commission itself has a budget of zero. We spend it down every year. But the goal is to preserve, conserve, and educate about the town's history, whether that is pulling together a list of historical structures, which is not as easy as you would think, because it's not necessarily easy to tell when certain structures were built in this town, whether they were built before 1901 or after, as you get pictures of them that were 1906. And barns have a way of moving, houses have a way of moving in this town. But I've really enjoyed helping to preserve, again, preserve, conserve, and educate people about the town. For most of my 12 years on the Historical Commission, I've also been the designee to the CPC. And I've been the chair of the CPC probably eight or nine years now. And I'm really proud of the work that the whole committee has done on the CPC. To answer one of Andrew's questions, it is down to about 14% right now. I will tell you about a month, no, it was actually earlier this month. Stuart Saginaw, who is the guru, if you will, of our state organization. He is a walking encyclopedia of everything CPA. He came out and did a talk with CPCs from East Long Meadow, Long Meadow, Munson, Wilbraham, Springfield, and I think Agawam. And one of the things we got there to answer one of your questions is there has never been a community that has dropped out of it.
Oh, really?
Yeah. And Arlene is right, the mix has, the match has gone down. I think it was, when I first got on the committee, it was 20, somewhere in the 28% to 30% range. It's now down to 14. Why? Because it's so successful. What I also took from that meeting with Stuart Saginaw is our committee is doing, I think, can I say everything right? Never. But are we doing basically the right things, both in terms of developing a process for vetting the applications that come to the town, soliciting the applications? We've developed a pretty good system for getting, for letting the people who might be putting in applications know when the application process is, what we're looking for in the applications. And we've, you know, I think we've done a good job of monitoring the system. We've developed a system that I'm not sure other communities use, where we get quarterly reports from all of the applicants that have been awarded fee, funds, so we can follow what's going on with those applications and making sure they're progressing. It's, I've been on a lot of committees in a lot of different situations. The CPC is maybe the most functional committee I've ever been on. And the Historical Commission is quieter, but also really functional and I hope to continue on it.
Great, thank you. Any questions from the board? All right, well, thank you so much for joining us. We'll be voting on your appointment in the next meetings.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Pleasure being here.
David Miller for the Energy and Sustainability Committee.
David Miller, 68 East Greenwich Road, here in the fine town of Long Meadow. I've been here since 1978, remarkably accompanied by my wife the entire time. I have had an interest in town activities since about the mid or early 1980s, when my wife became very involved in town politics. And I managed to stay in the same house with her for the duration of that time and served as a sounding board and at one point probably knew as much about what was going on in the town as anyone else. But my actual active involvement began in 2012, when I and a other group of people got together and sponsored and got the stretch code passed. And that is one of the things that we continue to work on now in the Sustainability Committee, and that is because if there's an extension to the stretch code that's coming up, which will codify more strict requirements. Interestingly, it's not going to have much of an effect on private ownership, but it will have an effect, I think, on any new business construction that goes on in town. And it's merely an attempt to try and improve the efficiency and sustainability of any new environments that are constructed. I have some other interests and one of the things that you see here is the electric lights. Just early on, when I became a member of the committee at its inception, we decided that one of the things that needed to be done in town was to improve the efficiency of the town buildings. And that included the electrical processes that occur in town, in particular the lights in the town buildings, and also the insulation in the town buildings. And I was involved in that. So I've had a long interest in improving the efficiency of the town and look forward to some serious challenges, I think, in the coming years. Because although it's fairly simple to get together a program to improve a defined entity such as town buildings, it's much more difficult to encourage the town members to improve the sustainability of their own homes. And that, as you know, can be done through the Mass Save programs. And I've been involved with that program and we continue to push that as a committee. So I'm hoping that you'll reappoint me because I look forward to a lot of challenges in the future.
Go ahead, Josh.
A question about Mass Save. So when you first entered in the MOU, we got a few complaints from people that they weren't happy with, I can't remember the name of the company off the top of my head, that you partnered with. But I haven't heard anything lately, so I assume that's good. But how many Mass Save interventions have you had in the past year or two?
Well, that's an individual kind of thing. We have only sponsored a real intensive introduction to that, to the community twice in the past, say, four years. But Mass Save, as you know, has been around for a long time. I've had now four interventions and you can have them done every two years in your home. And it's amazing to me, each time they come in to my home, they find something else that has, needs to be done, maybe wasn't looked at with any particular intensity in prior years in terms of their programs. So I think it's a very worthwhile endeavor. As far as the difficulty is, actually Mass Save contracts out with at least two, if not three, different vendors, who then independently may send you a mailing and invite you to participate in their home energy assessment. And then you contact them and make an arrangement for a visit and then a contract if they find things that need to be gone forward with. So that's a little bit confusing to the town and the response, the difficulty is that we don't have any control over those different entities. They're just private activities that function through Mass Save. So I think the important thing is that if homeowners are having difficulty, they let the town know and certainly the town can let us know and we can intervene hopefully to make things better.
Anything else?
I just want to add that as liaison to the Energy and Sustainability Committee and having sat in on meetings, you know, I appreciate all of the, you know, value that you bring to the committee and, you know, you're, I think, an integral member of it. And just want to also underscore everything you said about the stretch code work and how important that's going to be. So thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for being here tonight.
Appreciate it.
Andrew Burkey, Parks and Rec Commission. Thanks for joining us.
I'm Andrew Burkey, 32 Williston Drive. I'm seeking reappointment to Parks and Rec. I've been there the last six years. I've been there the last six years, and we have accomplished a lot in those six years. Well, Swamp got turned on, a bunch of other things have happened. We weathered the pandemic in recreation. And if you have young children, you will notice that we are kind of bursting at the seams recreation-wise in town. And it's a lot of fun to see kids participating in recreation, but it also causes a lot of challenges, because we don't quite have enough space to put all of those kids. And so a lot of the things that we navigate on the committee are trying to figure out how to equitably find spots for everyone. And so it's both fun and a challenge, I guess. And it means that we get to participate and interact with, I guess, all of the sport associations in town, which is a lot of fun. So the new refreshed LBA to lacrosse, to soccer, to the programs that we run ourselves like track and cross country, so, of which I have volunteered the last, I don't know, three or four years as a coach in those programs.
Great, thank you. Anything from the board? You nailed it. All right.
Okay.
Thank you so much. Yeah, we'll be voting on your appointment soon.
Cool.
Thanks. All right. Virginia Ryder for Recycling Commission.
My name is Virginia Ryder, and my husband and I, from 20 Berkshire Lane in Long Meadow. My husband and I moved here in 1978, so we've been here a number of years. I've been on the Recycling Committee for about nine years, under the tutelage of you-know-who, Arlene. She's been wonderful. And I've been involved with, obviously, the Saturday, Sunday mornings down at the swap shop. And I've enjoyed, and also, the commission has done some outreach things in the community as far as getting, we, one year we got kids involved at the middle school doing projects related to recycling, and some actually made videos. It was really an exciting time. We've done a number of things like that, you know, especially on Earth Day, we have things, and we have the shredding event, which is always successful. And so it's been a very rewarding, I really enjoy working down at the recycling center and especially the swap shop. It's been fascinating to see what people bring in and what they shouldn't bring in, and how to get them to sort of understand, do a little education, and get them to understand what is worth having in the swap shop, and, but also redirecting them when things have to go someplace else. So anyways, it's been, it's been a wonderful experience. I do enjoy it a lot.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Anything from the board? Go ahead, Josh.
Me and my kids have received your education at the swap shop. You're very kind, so, thank you.
Good.
We all learned something.
Well, we love it, and we love the kids coming down. They have great questions. Yeah.
Great. All right, great. Well, thank you so much for joining us tonight.
No problem. Thank you very much.
And Mr. Carnahan, I think we have to call you up one more time here for Tree Committee.
Patrick Carnahan, 311 Farmington Road, Long Moe, Mass. Been a resident, everybody keeps telling the resident date, so moved into town in '69, moved down in '79, moved back in 2002, so I've been here since then, so on and off for 37 years. And I am applying for the Tree Committee, or reapplying for the Tree Committee. It would be my fourth appointment. I've completed nine years.
Okay, great. Do you want to maybe speak a little bit about why you're reapplying again, about maybe some kind of work that you're excited about with?
Sure, so, I mentioned, I moved into town in '69. In 1969, the tree canopy, tree cover in Long Meadow was quite substantial. It's degraded significantly since then. I personally like trees. I like tree-lined streets. It's tree-lined suburbia that comes sort of with it. And I would like to work on, and we have been working on, trying to get the tree cover planted at the same time, taking care of the hazard trees, because as trees age, they become hazardous. So we do have to mitigate the hazard by removing trees, but we also need to plant trees. And so that's sort of been the challenge. It's very expensive to maintain them, very expensive to trim them, to take down hazard trees, and to plant trees. So that's, that's a real challenge. I also enjoy the educational aspect of telling people the value of trees, and so that's part of what we do, is a Tree Committee. We've got a couple of new members that are very engaged in doing the educational outreach, so I'm very excited about how they're going to interplay with the Tree Committee on that also.
Great, thank you. Anything from the board? All right, great. Thank you so much for joining us tonight.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. All right. We are now going to move on to Select Board comments, so just a couple of quick things for me. Just want to congratulate our Long Meadow High School girls tennis team and the boys lacrosse team for winning state championships. And I also want to congratulate Josh Levine on his reelection here, and congratulate Andrew Lamb on your election, and looking forward to working with both of you this year. So congratulations. Josh?
Just on the election, I want to thank everyone who was working there, and everyone's working hard. It was, it was a great turnout in the day of, and what I was really heartened to see was that the mail-in participation was massive. It was a huge turnout for overall. And I, I would be curious to hear what the, what it costs us to do the mail-in, what the participation is, and what all that shakes out. I'd like to have Tim in here, or at least get the information passed to us, because, if you make it easy for people to vote, they're going to vote, and I think that's great. And then I just want to mention the Middle School Building Committee. I said in announcements earlier that there's a public forum tomorrow. Last week, we had a meeting, and we had a lot of, a good crowd there to watch the meeting, and it was all folks from Duxbury, Woodside, Woolworth, and Terry Drive, who all are surrounding the Williams site with traffic concerns. And I certainly understand the concerns, and if there are other people who weren't at the meeting, or didn't, you can watch the video, but tomorrow, there will be a chance to learn a lot about what the steps that are being taken to try to help traffic, and we have, we're working with really good architects and designers who are taking this very seriously. So if anyone's curious, I would recommend them watch the meeting and go tomorrow.
Great, thank you. Dan?
Thanks. Just quickly echo your same sentiments of Venee, in terms of the, the high school sports with the girls tennis winning Division II state championship, and the boys winning Division II state championship, their 21st state championship, pretty impressive. And then also, congratulations, Andrew, as the newest member.
Thank you.
We haven't, didn't really know each other, but look forward to getting to know you and working with you. You know, nice job on the campaign and election, and Josh as well. We didn't want that LCTV agreement to go without you, all the work you put into that, so.
I think that was, that might put me over the top.
But glad to have both of you here, and, and then also, I did want to mention Leah Peterson, who ran as well for Select Board. I thought she had a, she ran a strong campaign as someone who has never sought office before, so I did want to mention that. And that was it.
Thanks. Mark?
Yeah, just a couple of things. I just want to report on the Scannick Valley Regional Health Trust, that meetings that I go to, they continue to do well financially. This last meeting, just so people can understand the kind of programs they run, there was a lot of discussion about their reinsurance. They actually have a process in there, I think they said there's between 10 and a dozen people who are insured in the eight top communities that they work with, who have significant medical costs. And Scannick Valley runs a reinsurance program, so anybody with medical costs hitting over $250,000, it moves to a reinsurance. That's a method of, I mean, obviously, the town pays, the Scannick Valley pays for that, but it's a method of protecting the financial, you know, assets of, of the group, and I think it's a, it's a great system. They're also talking a little bit about some of the other programs they have for wellness that people participate on. It's very important that they be able to maintain the very strong, positive financial agreements they have, as we know that this coming year, the rates are going up 0% for the town of Long Meadow, and it's a testimony to the, the work of the Scannick Valley Regional Health Committee, and so I think people should do that. The other thing I just want to mention is the Pioneer Valley Transit Authority. Again, they have a board meeting that I was at, which is reiterating, this is the 20th anniversary, I think, of the Pioneer Valley Transit Authority, and they have free transit in July to mid-August, and so people should take advantage of that. It's a, it's a great program, and hopefully it'll show what the ridership can do and how much people appreciate transit in the community.
Great, thank you. All right. So we can now move on to the Town Manager's Report.
Thank you. So I have official election results that are linked in the agenda here. I'm not going to read through the whole thing. However, the thing to note is that for the Housing Authority, they are not official results yet. There was a two-way tie for write-in candidates. Each one of them received four votes. It's a tie between Shelley Baron and Ciro Camerata. The town clerk has talked with the Elections Division, is going to work with Town Council to determine next steps, so we'll have a further update for you, as it potentially may have some involvement on your end. The age-friendly designation, the town has reached a milestone in our aging dementia-friendly process. The Age Friendly Action Plan for Long Meadow has been approved. AARP has reviewed the Age Friendly Action Plan, put together by the Age Friendly Task Force under the Long Range Plan Steering Committee, with the expert guidance of PBPC's Becky Bosch. In 2018, the town had been certified as a dementia-friendly community by AARP. So this was the second piece of that project. But it was spearheaded through the work of the Long Range Plan Steering Committee. The Age Friendly Plan is incorporated as a full appendix in the 2024 Long Range Plan that just recently wrapped up, and the recommendations have also been incorporated into the actions identified for the Long Range Plan. So work to be, to begin implementing those strategies is going to specifically be done with the Council on Aging Planning Board and here with the Select Board. And the Long Range Plan, with the Long Range Plan now concluded, approval of the Age Friendly Action Plan, we do, I do want to make sure I have a special thank you to some key members who made sure that this work got done. Assistant Town Manager Corinne Micey-Munz, Planning Board Chair and Chair of the Long Range Plan Steering Committee Cheryl Thibodeau, Jim Layden, Adult Center Director, and our two senior liaisons representing the community, Teri Weiner and Cory Odense, for their dedication to reaching broad and diverse audience for this project. That's all I have for my report tonight. Happy to take any questions that you have.
So I think with the Housing Authority, if I understand correctly, that when there is, when no names appear on the ballot, you need five write-in votes to clinch a seat, so I think we had two people with four, and so that's what's causing this potential issue?
Potentially. I don't know the specifics from the update I had last week as I prepared this report, but I'll have more info. I'll confirm that. That sounds right.
Yeah, I think, I think that's, I think that's right. And then, not from the Town Manager's Report, but from the monthly reports, I did want to just highlight that the ADA playground equipment installation is going to begin this week from the DPW report.
Yep.
And then also, the L Project is now, for the Water Main, L Project, it looks like it's scheduled to begin in July, and I know that, you know, obviously, it had to be delayed for circumstances outside of our control. Are we still on track, feeling good that we'll be able to complete this before, you know, the potential tip project?
We are moving ahead until we are told otherwise. Yes, so we, full steam ahead.
That's about it. It ended up being like a two-month delay?
Sounds about right.
Around that, okay. Mark?
Yeah, thanks. Just follow up on Venee's question. Work on the L Project, one of the things that concerns me is the, the traffic and traffic shutdown. One of the things we talked about is maybe getting some public input, and I was just wondering if there was any, going to be any process by which there was public input sought about, or discussion sought, or public forums or whatever, about the traffic patterns and traffic plans, and what it's going to do, especially for, if we're going to work nights or whatever it is, or early mornings, and people who live in the area, because nothing here says anything about involving the residents of that area, and I think certainly they need to be involved, if not the rest of the town, because every, seems like in the morning everybody goes through that, and that's intersectional forest plan in the western.
I'll talk with DPW, especially as they get their construction schedule firmed up with the contractor. I will say, it would be odd to do resident outreach on construction planning efforts, but there might be some happy medium to make sure that we're keeping them informed, and if they had some, some different thoughts on it, we could take them. But I would be careful to call it a big open process, to weigh in on traffic detours, just, we would set precedent, and we have a lot of road projects that are going to start. But I think there's, there's some hybrid option there that we could definitely entertain.
One other thing, the Finance Report, and it says, "Contact Nature Conservatory and Service Net Regarding Incomplete Three ABCs and Their Risk of Losing Exempt Status in the Upcoming Fiscal Year Assessors."
What is that?
So this is, we've encountered this a couple, with a couple of the agencies where the nonprofit status is not active, and so they cannot get exemptions on property tax, excise tax, related to that. And so our assessor has been vigorously crossing all the Ts, dotting all the Is, to make sure everything is in place. As you know, it's a new assessor, she's making sure everything is lined up, and in such, she's finding that there's some expired statuses on things that need to be renewed in order to qualify for exemptions.
So what's our, is our approach to?
She lets them know. She reaches out, or they get a bill.
So do we, so do we give them a grace period to go renew their, their nonprofit status, or do we bill them until they get it?
It depends on the situation. With excise, there's very little room, but there's certain timelines that have to be met. So if they can supply it before it has to get turned over, usually we recommend they pay it, and then they file an abatement after. But in this specific case, I don't know. I'm not sure. I would need to look into it.
Okay, that's, and the last thing is, I noticed, and this is the year-to-date budget items, who is it in the school department that, I understand that they're not responsible for line item budgeting, thus they're only responsible for the bottom line, but boy, they got some lines that are way over, over, over budget in that school department. I'm just wondering if, does the, does the entire school department get that budget, or does it just go to Superintendent O'Shea, and we don't know where it goes from there? And we really don't care, as long as the bottom line stays okay?
I'm not, I'm sorry, I was looking for what you were talking about, so.
It's just that if, if, the budget we got, which is a munis printout, if you go to the school department lines of it, there were an awful lot of, that seemed to show over, over budget through, I think, I don't, I think this was the end of April, the end of May, so I was just curious of, if they're getting it as well as, as us?
Oh, yeah, they're, so we're in the crunch time right now, as the fiscal year is about to close out. So both Ian, the rest of the finance team, but also on the school side, the Assistant Superintendent, they're running these reports. Transfers are coming in furiously. Everyone is looking at this right now.
Yeah, thanks.
Anyone else?
Just quick, the only comment that I want to make was, I had noticed, and, correct me if I'm wrong, Lynn, but for the Parks and Rec, are we, are we really spending around $35,000 a year at the clay courts?
Yes, that's what the cost is to maintain that court.
I mean, I, I drive by all the time and never see anybody on those courts. When I saw the number, I was just, it's kind of shocking.
The maintenance cost is to get them ready. I know that the Park and Rec Commission is taking this exact topic up at, I think they, their last meeting they did, and they plan to take it up again. I do think that you may expect a report or a recommendation from them in the future on, on what, what to do there. So I would encourage, you know, you, any of you, or certainly any public listening, if you have thoughts on it, either strongly to keep them or to repurpose them to something else, reach out to the Park and Rec Commission.
Anything else? All right, so we can move on to old business. The first item is to approve draft meeting minutes, so I'll entertain a motion to approve our May 20th, 2024 meeting minutes.
So moved.
Second. All right. All those.
Can I just, there were corrections, if I could?
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
Thank you. I sent a couple of corrections to Mike that I think they need to be included, and several of them are, you know, call them?
Typos.
Typos, or, or, whatever that is. But one of them, I just wanted to make a comment on, and I may in fact have said what he reported, in fact, I probably did say what, what he reported. But the, the cost of the municipal aggregation is 0.1 cent per kilowatt hour, and I think it's reported in there as .01. And so I think it should reflect the actual cost. Whether I said that or not, I, I'm sure he captured what I said, but I misspoke then.
Okay.
So I want to make that correction. And I sent that to Mike as well.
I think we were told the actual cost is much lower than what anyone was saying, .01 or something like that.
Not that I meant. Okay, well, it's .1.
It is .1?
It's .1 cent per kilowatt hour that the aggregator, not the, that the consultant gets from the suppliers, not from the town, but they get it from the suppliers, based on the volume that they sell.
Wrong line of work.
Okay. Just telling you, that's what it is.
All right. So do we need to amend, or should we just go ahead and give this vote?
Just take the.
Okay, perfect, okay. As amended. All those in favor? Abstained?
I shall abstain.
All right. So next up is our, the continuation of our FY 2025 Water Sewer Storm Water Rate Discussion. We started this discussion at our last meeting. I think when I spoke with Andrew last week, I encouraged you to watch this part of the video from our meeting, so you can be caught up to speed. And I also believe that the Finance Director sent over an additional memo to us about this. So I don't know who wants to set up this discussion, Lynn or Ian, but.
Sure. So what I'm passing out right now, sorry, didn't mean to interrupt.
Oh, no.
Sorry, is the memo that was sent to you late today. It is in response to the questions that came up at your last meeting. They're, what I counted, I think, was four specific questions, a follow-up. And so this is the information that we have for you. It's not as detailed as the last memo you had, so if you would like, you can quickly skim through it. And then happy to answer any additional questions that you might have on it.
This guy emailed to us at 6:36 today, right?
Yes, yes.
Yeah, I apologize. I was in Finance Committee meetings for appointing new members, so it was.
I'm just pointing out, none of us have read it.
Yes, nobody's read it. And again, it's answers to questions that were brought up at the last meeting. So if you want, I can read the question just to remind you. And then I won't necessarily go through each of these items, because I don't think it's that relevant for tonight's conversation, but more a takeaway for the future.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Okay. So one of the questions you asked at the last meeting was, what do other communities have for balances in their water enterprise retained earning accounts? The communities that Ian and I both split to survey, and we are still waiting on quite a few responses, there were very few that actually gave us a dollar amount that they had right now. But most hovered between 20% of the utility budget, 50% of the utility budget, or some combination of that, like Southwick has used zero to 490,000 over the past five years in retain, in water retained earnings. So it's not quite answering what you had, but we found that it was kind of all over the place.
Just for reference, what is on that?
What our balance is?
Yeah, I mean, if we're going to compare it to other communities, I'm just wondering, how is this?
Oh, so our, the, our goal is $500,000.
Which is?
We're at 323,550 currently.
Are you asking, like, what is that percentage of?
Yeah, if somebody called us and asked us the same question we asked them, what would our answer have been?
Our, our answer would have been the policy that you have, which is a balance of $500,000, not a percentage of our budget.
Fine, okay.
The second question you asked was whether they had policies regarding use of retained earnings and balances. Belcher Town, no policy. Charlton, they maintain a reserve amount of 20% of the budget. Same with Ludlow, but that was for sewer. Ludlow did not have one for water. Ware has no policy. Chickapie maintains a surplus in retained earnings to cover projects or to reduce the need for loans. They increase rates when the rate no longer supports the annual operating budget. Southwick uses retained earnings to offset increases in capital and operations. So not, those were not necessarily policies, they were just answers that were provided to us. And then Wilberham uses retained earnings to help stabilize rates. And then other communities, we don't have responses on. So then, the, the answer that is a lot longer here, and I might actually skip to the end, I'm sorry, the question that has a lot longer of an answer, I might skip to the end for, because it kind of tees up for the water rate conversation. And then you also had asked for a gain and loss report for the Water Enterprise Fund, and that has been attached to this memo tonight. It shows you, I think, is it, did you give three years?
Three years, yep.
Of?
Three years of activity within the Water Sewer Storm Water Enterprise accounts, any activity that was taking place during town meetings, whether that be capital projects or outlays of funds.
So the longer answer to question number three, which was, what are Springfield and Water Sewer Commission budget numbers? And so this was, I believe this question was asked in relation to the rate increase and the percentage increase Springfield was giving us. And I want to be clear, Ian has done a great deal of work putting that together for you, or providing some more information on what the general operating budget is for Springfield. But what I don't think was made abundantly clear at the last meeting is that the increases that we receive from Springfield are related to the capital budget, not their operating budget. And so I think that is the distinction there. They have some really massive capital projects happening. We are apportioned a share of that, and that's the bulk of what our increase is attributed to. So I'll stop there. I don't know if there's questions, or if you would like to have Ian go back into some of the budget stuff with Springfield.
Go ahead, Mark.
Yeah, so Lynn, I'm going to question your last comment, that the bulk of it's related to capital. Because if you look at their increase, and this is in the letter from April 4th, which we just got over the weekend, says that ONM, and ONM is operations and maintenance, operations and maintenance went up from 13.2 million to 14.2 million to 18.5 million in the coming year. So it went up pretty significantly. That's operations and maintenance. Where capital outlay went up from 3.8 million to 3.7 million, actually went down to 4.5. So the, the capital didn't, doesn't appear to have really gone up that much. I mean, it's gone up, but not nearly as much as their operations and maintenance. And the memo, as I read it, said that they've got a new accounting system that's allocating for operations and maintenance differently. But be that as it may, I guess I still have no clue, and I'd love to ask, you know, whatever his name is, the Finance Director, Pellegrino, you know, they come down and they say, we're going to allocate to the town of Long Meadow $1,933,313. You know, and the town of Long Meadow is going to get 6.49%, which is the three-year running average of the, of the water usage. But nowhere does it say how much they're going to sell us in volume. And I think, based on my understanding of past years, they bill us based on volume, not based on $1,933,313. And so nowhere does this memo say, we therefore plan on charging for fiscal year 2024 $2.33 or whatever it is per 100 cubic feet. They use a different unit than we do. But, but they don't, you know, and so the question I would have is, how do you take this budget that they have and turn it into bills for, for communities? Because they bill by volume, and, and it seems to me, they do what we do. They assume a volume, they're using a three-year average, we assume a three-year average, and we bill by volume. But they throw this out as their budget, but nowhere do they tell you what they're going to bill us per unit of water. They just tell us there's an allocation of $1.933 million allocated to Long Meadow. And so the question is, what are we actually going to get billed? And what's, what's the basis by which they do the billing? Because this, this memo of theirs, which is the most thorough I've ever seen a memo they've written, clearly says the costs that are going up are in operations and maintenance and, and maintenance expenses, that they have a new process for allocating, and this is how they proportion the, their expenses. But they don't say how they're billing.
So, Mark, if I can respond to that, Sean and I had a conversation with the Springfield Water team on the 11th, and we specifically asked him how this works. So the 1.93 million that the town has billed, is billed on a monthly basis, and that reflects what Springfield Water will bill us annually. So this is the cost estimate that they come up with. And I asked him, I said specifically, Josh, is this expected, or is this our actual cost? And he said that this is our actual cost. At year-end, Springfield Water will reconcile this amount based on our monthly billings and true up the balance. Last year, the town was issued a credit because we underbilled what, or we, we paid more than what was billed, so we were issued a credit. But depending on the activity for the year, it could require additional billings. So this is a function of cost centers and are based on calculations of prior year costs. But I reiterated with him, I said, is this what we will actually be billed on a monthly basis? And he said yes.
And how much did we get as a credit?
That, I, I'd have to defer to Lisa with that. I don't know.
So, so we don't get billed on volume, on a quarterly basis?
This amount reflects an annual total, and we get billed 12 months of that amount. And that's how we've been billed previously. That's my understanding of how this works.
But if there's a true-up, is that because they figure out what the usage was? Or because, oh, we found out how much this has all cost us to do our, you know?
It would be based on year-end usage. So they would bill us monthly for a given amount, based on their projections for the year, and at year-end, when they have actual amounts.
Find out what it actually was.
They would find out what it actually was.
Then you could be credited, or you could owe more.
Exactly.
I don't want to put Lisa on the spot.
Shouldn't.
Okay. All right. But if there is a point where you do have information on a question that's asked?
Okay.
Feel free.
Yeah, jump on it.
And so just to point out a little bit of this conversation, and it's in the memo as well, Ian and Sean have requested that Springfield Water and Sewer attend one of your meetings. We tried to get them here tonight, they weren't available. We've asked for July 1st, although it seems like that meeting might have a quorum issue and potentially vacation scheduling issues for Springfield. So we felt it was important for them to come talk to you directly about what their budget is, instead of us gathering some information, but then if you have follow-up questions, it's not helpful for us to say, you know, we'll have to get back to you. I think we need some answers on the spot.
What is the deadline for which we have to set our water rate?
So, to answer that specifically, there is some time. You don't have to do it tonight. The next billing is mid-July, is that right? So you have a little bit of time, but it depends on when your next meeting is. The mailing cycle is really determined by us. It would just shrink down the amount of time someone has to make a payment. But to set the rate and to generate a bill, I think, we certainly could wait, but I do think you have the information to be able to do that. I think a lot of your questions are bigger questions that impact the future. I don't know that it's going to impact the FY 25 amount from Springfield that much.
Yeah, go ahead.
So, we bill three months at a time. Our quarters are January, February, March, April, May, June, July, August, and September, October, November, December, right? And for the middle two quarters, we, we have a different sewer system, but our water system is the same. My understanding was that rates we would vote today, or we vote, go into effect July 1st, 2024, for the fiscal year 2025 budget. But the reading that's being made on or July, around July 1st, which covers the usage of April, May, and June, is billed at the 2024 rate that we set, not the 2025 rate. And if that's correct, and I'm not suggesting this, but that, that.
Have another quarter.
We don't need to set these rates until sometime in September 1st, so we can get them into the billing for the July, August, September. Now, having said that, there was a massive discussion 10 years ago, and it was, it was Alex Grant who did this, that said, because we used to set the rates in July and August. And he said, it's not fair to the town residents to not know what the rates are for the water they're using starting July 1st. You know, and so that's when we moved up the rate setting to this time of year, so that people knew what the rates were starting July 1st. But the rate we set tonight, or we set for fiscal 2025, is for fiscal 2025, which is water that's used starting July 1st, 2024. Now, I'm not suggesting we wait all the way till September, but my comment is that, in theory, we don't, you know, what they're getting billed on for the July 1st, give or take, reading, is the three months ended then, is based on the 2024 rate. Now, if that's not happening, then there's been a change in the town, the way we do business, because we've been, and in fact, the vote was to set the 2024 rates at the rate we have now, not to, and not to, if you will, use this 2025 rate for the last quarter of fiscal 2024. I don't know if I'm being clear, but.
I don't know if you want.
Oh, no, go ahead, Lynn.
This came up a lot during the quarterly billing, and I know Lisa lives and breathes this every day, but I remember this coming up. I don't remember the answer. I'm hoping Lisa does, but I know we talked about this when we were developing that rate structure.
So for the last two years, we have used the rate that we voted on here in June for the bill that comes out at the beginning of August. So it is the April, May, and June usage at the new rate, not the existing fiscal year rate. So we haven't been doing what Mark is saying and delaying the rate implementation.
That's counter to the vote of the Select Board.
You said, people are using water, but not knowing what rate they're being billed at April, May, and June.
There was a reason for this, I remember. I just, I don't remember the specific reason. I remember it coming up. I remember conversations about it. I'll have to go back and look. But I know it was a deliberate action.
Fine, I, I'm, I'm not arguing that we're not doing it, I'm just giving the history.
Yeah. Josh?
Yeah, I remember us talking about this, and I don't, I also don't remember the reason, but, and Mark, I think you're certainly right on that, and the corollary, corollary to, we don't want people to not know the rate, is we also don't want to set a rate without knowing, getting some answers. So we're, yeah, we're kind of stuck in the middle. But I, I certainly think you're right that we, if we were going back, then it would take some time. But, you know, I, I want people to know the rate, but I also want people to know that we have done our due diligence in our setting the rate, the right rate, and are comfortable with it.
No, you're right, Josh. And I think one thing you can say is, what we're seeing today, folks, is you're going to have a 22% or 24% increase in your water rate, which nobody wants to see, but you can say, that's where it's going. And people, you know, without voting it, that's clearly what the numbers show. But we're going to get the, and maybe we'll make some, some adjustments, hopefully downward. But that's very different from just. But that's very different from just billing them these new rates for April through June 30th. They've already used the water, and many people, and that was, the whole issue was the sprinklers and the irrigation and all that kind of stuff, was using water with the, using old water, if you will, at the new rate. And that was something we did not want to do and intentionally chose not to do.
Okay. So I think, I mean, this is later on in the agenda, but we have a proposed meeting schedule. So I think the next proposed meeting is actually the middle of July, like July 15th or 16th or so. And so you all have not talked to Springfield Water Commission about that being a date that could possibly work for them to come?
No.
It was just the July 1st?
The July 1st, they were not available.
Okay. Well, I mean, I think personally for me, I would like to get some more information, and I, and I think to Josh's point, hopefully the public understands that we're doing our due diligence and looking, looking for all the information before we set rates. So, you know, unless, you know, anyone else has anything to say that could, you know, potentially chip in my mind, I think it makes, it would make sense to maybe delay this, you know, for another month.
Yeah, even if we are, there is going to be a big jump this year, which, that seems to be an indication. I think we really owe it to everyone to be able to look forward and find out what's the next four years, because if we go 22% every year, that's going to, could change people's lifestyles or decisions on their lawn. So I really, I think that that is the right thing to do, and even if we have to set a special meeting for it, if we have to do something to give it time, and depending on what Lisa tells us about TPW billing, I think that we owe it to people to do that.
If I can add an additional point, I think that the Springfield Water Commission seems receptive to this whole understanding of the town, because after our discussion, I reached out to Dominic Pellegrino, and I noted this in the memo, about the operating maintenance expense increase, because it was over 4.2 million dollars. And that is a significant increase for not only Springfield Water, but a portion to the other different communities. So he, and I put this in the memo, he spoke about the details of the account and what caused those drivers. And I think I would like, or I would ask the board to, when they come and meet with us, give them, give them your feedback and really ask questions about where these increases are and what they expect coming forward.
More important than that, I think we owe it to them to submit our questions to them in advance, because the worst thing that can happen is have them show up here and say, I don't know, I got to get back to you, you know? And I guarantee you, without the questions in advance, that's very likely to happen. And so, I mean, I'll be glad to put together my questions in advance, hopefully they, others can do the same thing. And just so people at home can see this, you know, capital went up marginally, debt service went up, actually marginally. So the question that came up last time was, does this reflect the West Parish Filter Project? And the answer is no, it doesn't. Not at all. They haven't bonded that yet, so none of that's there. You know, what this reflects is a change in their operations, as far as I can tell, and they're, you know, they're independent, they're able to do whatever they want to do, I guess, but we ought to get a chance to push back to them. I'm just personally a little concerned that this memo came April 3rd, and the Select Board's seen it, or the Water and Sewer Commissioners, seen it for the first time this weekend. So that's 60 days, at least 60 days later, and that's, when the 22% increase is coming, we shouldn't be not seeing this 60 days later. That's my thought.
Anyone else? Yeah, and then I think also, you know, we can look back and see why we were applying the subsequent, you know, the subsequent year, fiscal year's rates to the last quarter, just so that we, for our knowledge, know why, and can explain that, that also obviously be helpful.
But it's a problem, because there are people who've been turning on their sprinklers-
Right.
Since April 1st, or give or take, thinking that they're paying one rate, and they're going to get billed 22% higher for that, or they would have been getting billed 22% higher. I guess the other question that we ought to ask is, you know, Lisa, can you spin your magic and say, based on what we hope or see, or maybe two months' worth of readings that you've gotten so far, you know, what would it look like billing that at the 2024 fiscal year rates versus 2025 fiscal year rates for that, that quarter? Because it's, it's a, and 22%, there are people getting multi-thousand-dollar water bills, and 22% makes a big difference.
I believe in that memo from the Finance Director at the last meeting, there was some scenarios on what that increase looked like for the average user. You had that in there, I think. But if there's specifics-
Those were annual. I'm just looking at this quarter.
Yes, then you just cut it and-
Well, it's not, it's not linearly, though, it's not-
Because of how we bill for winter averaging, you're right.
No, no, because of how people use their water. People don't use water linearly during the year. They use far more in the spring and the summer than in the fall. But, you know, the-
Well, we took rates based on both summer and fall, so you could take theoretically one of the water rate periods during the summer and equate that to the new rates to see what that changes. We have the ability to do that.
Okay, great. And then I think also, you know, Ian, Lynn, whoever's scheduling this meeting with Springfield Water Commission, you guys are obviously aware of the questions that we have too, that you can pass along to them.
Yeah, I think it would be helpful if you have questions, you get those to Ian.
Okay.
He'll compile them, so we're not sending seven different emails to Springfield Water. We can send them one. I think at, for this point, we should plan on them coming for July 15th, so if you get your questions in, you know, early July, we'll get them off to them, and we'll confirm that they'll be here at the next meeting.
Okay, great.
But meanwhile, what do we do about water rates? I mean, from my perspective, I think we need to resolve whether this is going to be retroactive to April or not. And we can do that if we choose to.
So I was going to go back?
If I may, if we don't retroact it to the April, you know, May, June, you will have a quarter that has a lower rate, the current rate, and then your next three quarters, you're going to have to go more than 20% to cover the operating budget.
But it'll be four quarters.
No, because then the fourth quarter will then be in the new fiscal year, covering the new fiscal year budget.
It should not be. That's my point.
Revenue is recognized in the fiscal year it's received.
I understand revenue is recognized in the fiscal year it's received, but billing is, the billing rate is in the fiscal year it's used. That was our, that was the intent of the Select Board. Okay? So you're right. This year, for fiscal year 2025, the first quarter is going to be at the 2024 rate. But for fiscal year 2025, or 2026, the first quarter will be at the 2025 rate.
Yes, but it's going to get to June 30th. You're going to have to have the revenue to cover the enterprise, otherwise you got to get, you know, from the general fund. So the year has to cover the enterprise budget. Whether the rate is a higher or lower rate, the whole year has to be covered.
The revenue has to be covered. The revenue is a cap, the revenue that we get in, in July, July, is fiscal year 2025 revenue. I get that. Okay? It came in based on a rate that we had set last year. My understanding, it was always like that. Or it was supposed to always be like that.
Well, before we went to quarters, it was on, you had six-month bills, so they didn't align them for fiscal year.
I remember this being talked about when we went to quarterly billing. I'll have to go back and look, I'll watch the meeting. I know we talked about it. I know there were memos about it, I know we exhaustively looked at it. I just don't know it enough to speak to it tonight.
Yeah, it makes sense why we'd have to come in during the year, but it is, it is kind of backwards on, on when the rate is used, so.
But it's evident also now, if we change it, there will be a shortfall basically along. There's going to be a catch-
If we don't change it, yeah.
The answer to that, Andrew, is, we don't know if there's going to be a shortfall, because we don't know how much water is going to be used, you know, and we never do. And this goes to the point of, what is our water stabilization fund for? You know, if somebody called me and said, what is Long Middle uses their water stabilization fund for? It's to equalize rates, because we, every year, estimate what our usage is going to be. And the one thing we know is, when that year is over, we did not use the amount of water we estimated. We either used more, which caused our revenue to be higher than we thought, or we used less, which caused our revenue to be below what we wanted. And we'd make up the difference, if it was less, from the water stabilization fund. That's the history of the water stabilization fund. The problem was, we went through this period of years where there was a lot more water being used than we projected every year. This is before we went, and our water stabilization fund grew. The target's 500,000, we had 1.2 million dollars in there at one point. And so we said, look, we're never going to use that to stabilize the rates. Let's take some of that and use it for a capital project, because it's water. And we did that, but that was the exceptional basis. And I don't want you, Ian being new, or Lynn, to say, well, that's the process, the stabilization fund is for capital projects. It's not. It was never intended to be for that. Now, I'm not sure what the policy said, but the fact, if you go back and ask Paul Pesterzic, he'll tell you it was to stabilize the rates. And it makes sense when that's the case, because you never know how much water people are going to use in the coming years. So you're always making that estimate. And so, you know, you hope that the 500,000 covers emergency repairs, because we always have to do that, and any variation in the water rates. And so, to me, that's very different from, you know, we use it for capital needs. We've always bonded capital needs for project, for water projects.
I got a dumb question. Did it, was it called the Water Rate Stabilization Fund?
It's called the Water Stabilization Fund.
Now it's retained earnings, so I'd-
It wasn't called the Rate Stabil, but, but that was, that was the use of it. That was the-
So, Mark, so in the past, it would be, to stabilize the rate, it would basically use to mitigate the rate?
No, it wasn't, it wouldn't necessarily stabilize the rate. What it would do is stabilize the fund. So if you say, look, we're going to bring in 1.5 million dollars in water fees, and the water use is down that year, and you only brought in 1.3 million in water fees, your budget was short 200,000. So you transfer money out of the stabilization fund to make up for the, because the water fund has to balance. But if, on the other hand, you said, we're going to bring in 1.5 million dollars in water rates, and you bring in 1.7, the extra would get transferred into the water stabilization fund, figuring a year from now, or two years from now, we're going to need that water for, because we're going to come up short.
So in a year where, let's say you underestimated, the rate was not as high as you needed it to be, you could use that as funds to basically cover the shortfall and then continue?
Yes. But it wasn't so much that the rate was lower than you needed to be, though usage-
It was, yes.
The usage was lower than you-
But they're related, right?
Right, they're related.
Okay. Well, I mean, I think from what I've heard from Lisa and Lynn, I think, I think that we can wait a month and, and continue how we have been billing, because it seems like we need to figure out, we need to just recall why that is exactly, but it seems like we had gone through some process, and that, that process had led to, you know, billing the way that we do. So if nobody else has anything else to say on this, then- Can I ask one more follow-up? Yeah, go ahead. Ian, Lynn, knowing what you know, though, is there any factor in here that they're likely to say, oh, we may, we can re-estimate that, or something like that? Basically, what they gave us is what it's going to be. They're not going, they're answering our questions about the future projections, but is there something I'm missing here about, like, something that they could actually assess, based on our input or our, our concerns, that they might actually reassess something that's been assessed to our town?
So my understanding of the process is Springfield Water Commission, in the past, has sent us a estimate in the December timeframe, and then come February, March, April, they send us their actual. So based on that, it is likely that we could see a change, but at this point, this is what they're going with. So we have no way of knowing if there's going to be a change or not, fortunately.
And they could always argue, hey, this is just your projection, we'll true it up at the end of the year, you'll pay exactly what you're supposed to pay, and everyone will get their commensurate amount, every community will do what they're part, so.
But, and maybe you've undercharged your residents at the time, or maybe you've overcharged them, and it depends on what the true-up is.
And then, so this goes back to the beginning, when Lynn said that you felt like we had all the information in front of us to set the water rate for the year?
I did, before there's additional questions that came up, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. I don't, I don't think the number from Springfield's going to change. And I think we know what our numbers are for the bonded projects we have going.
And you're basically saying, you know what, it's, it's, we can set the rates, and if we overestimate, then the next year, residents will benefit from having a lower rate the following year, et cetera?
That's, that generally isn't how it works, though, Andrew. They don't benefit from a lower rate the following year.
If we, would in our retained earnings be much higher, and then you could translate in, you know, you could set the rate a little lower than you thought it might need, and then-
Well, and that gets into-
You just have more in your retained earnings, and you have to stabilize the rate.
Right. So if you look at the water budget that Ian sends us, one of the lines is, use of retained earnings to reduce rates. And in the past years, if you go back, and you can go back many years in this thing, you'll see there are times that we've used retained earnings to lower rates, primarily because the retained earnings were very high, but also because we just wanted to moderate the rates a little bit. So we can, we can do that. I guess, in theory, you could do it next year.
Right. So I'm saying, like, let's say the rate was higher than we needed it to be this year, then your retained earnings would be very high, and you can use it to mitigate the rate in the next year, which would theoretically reduce the cost to, of the water to our residents. That's all I'm trying to say.
I think it's important to note two things. One, the commission can have retained earnings used to reduce the rate at two points during the year, the special town meeting and the annual town meeting. That is when it's able to be voted on to be used. In the past five years, the water rate has not made use of retained earnings to reduce the rate. Now, there has been the use of retained earnings, and I believe this is back in fiscal year 18, 2018, that's correct, but for water specifically, it has not needed to use retained earnings to reduce the rate. And that's not really a statement of the enterprise itself, I just wanted to make that clear to the Select Board, that in the past, it hasn't required to be, hasn't been required to be used. That doesn't mean that it doesn't in the future, but I just wanted to offer some additional clarity.
Is that because retained earnings were used for capital projects and things like that?
So if you look at the past three years in the fund balance that I provided, most of the retained earnings is used towards smaller capital projects, which is allowed under the Water Enterprise Fund policy. It can be used up to 500,000 towards capital projects. Mark is also correct that the water can be, the Water Enterprise Fund, Reserve Fund, can be used to reduce rates in use in emergencies. So in the past, say, three to five years, we have been using it historically for capital projects.
So I honestly think that this is kind of a philosophical question, in the sense that, you know, Mark's made a good point that in the past, hey, maybe this wasn't supposed to be used for capital projects. But at the same time, this board has, and everybody has talked about how, you know, we're, you know, have so many infrastructure projects that are coming up, you know, and how deferred maintenance has been an issue. I've heard each, I know each of you cares about that a lot. So when you talk about, you know, philosophically, should we, retained earnings be used for capital projects, or should they be used to mitigate the rate? To be honest, with the huge amount of infrastructure projects and capital improvements that we need, you know, one could easily argue, we need the money, basically. We need the money. It's hard for us to say, boy, it's, everyone has been deferring maintenance for so many years, but here we have an opportunity to use retained earnings to do that, but we're taking the money from that to lower the rate, which, you know, the rate's going up. From what I heard in the last meeting, you made, you said maybe it's not going up a lot in the next five years, but it's not going down, it's going up. Maybe in four or five years, it'll have a big jump like this, I think. I don't remember the reason why, but I think that this is possibly a new normal. Although you also said that we're not the highest community, we're actually on the lower end, so.
Just on that, in theory, and hopefully, we aren't charging people so much that we have, we have enough retained earnings to do all the capital projects we need, because I think our rates would be through the roof.
Just low enough, right.
And so it's not, it just can't cover what we need. I, you know, I, I see what you're saying.
Everything counts, but...
Right.
I mean, you have to bond for most things, but...
Right. And so, and we, we saw with the L Project came in under what we thought, but it was still massively expensive, and that's a tiny, tiny portion of our town. But yes, there is, there's a philosophical question. I, it's one of the benefits of having a mark around that has, I didn't know about the original idea of the retained earnings account, so that's interesting to know. And I can see, can see how it benefits, but, yeah, we don't, we don't want to build it up artificially, or, because I think if we charge some higher rates, we've made a mistake if we do have too much of retained earnings. So, but, you know, here and there, I can see why we'd want to do it and take away a little bit of pain, but...
Josh, we never, you know, intentionally overbuild for water to build retained earnings.
No, I wasn't saying you were.
You know, the issue is always, you know, oh, it's a dry summer, water usage is up for watering lawns, and our revenue's higher, so we put it in retained earnings. Oh, it's a wet summer, water uses, you know, I mean, that's always been the discussion. It's never been, you know, what we do. And like you said, we've gone to a three-year running average of water usage as the divisor to try to make that all work out.
Yeah.
You know, and not right, but it's not accurate, but it's the best we have.
Okay. So if we delay this vote for a month, what, what could we hear at the next meeting that would alter, you know, or change the water rate that we would set?
Basically, if they lower their projections.
It would simply offer you an opportunity to talk to Springfield Water Commission and inquire them about the increases on their end. That would be the point of waiting.
And the value of that would be that they would get pushback? And maybe that would influence them in the future, or make, like, compel them if they're hearing this from many communities to reassess?
And the drawback is that we wait a month, and folks are using water in July that, you know, for the first few weeks of July, where they don't know exactly what rate they're being charged.
Or going back, actually.
Yeah, or going back for three months.
But this is going to, it's going to be sticker shock for people regardless, I think. But I, while we were talking, I was looking through my, I was trying to find quarterly billing in our old minutes, see if I could find something really quick. And you, I just stumbled upon your point. You said, I don't think the rate change is going to change people's actions. And I still, it doesn't change behavior.
Twenty-two percent.
You never know.
Actually, it would.
I don't, I...
It's usually after the fact.
In theory, but I don't think it will. I mean, I still see, I go around town, it's raining, I see sprinklers on. I don't, I just don't think it hits people's pocketbooks enough to matter. Not that it doesn't, and some people, I know it will, because this is twenty-two percent, it's twenty-two percent. But I think we need to do what's right for us and what, we don't want to step on the DPW and our billing process. So I, you know, I could go either way, whatever the board wants to do.
Well, I give you another scenario, Josh, because we have not yet gotten the true-up for this year from Springfield Water and Sewer. And that may put an infusion into our water retained earnings bill, or fund. But it may not. I mean, we have no idea. And I think one of the things we ought to look at is, and maybe we can do that internally. And the reason I'm saying this is that I, I would like to use money, and frankly, when we talk back in, in March, we were going to put, we thought we had $200,000 worth of money from the Water Retained Earnings Fund that we could put toward the fees this year to lower the, the rates by, you know, 10 cents or something like that, you know? And from that March 22 agreement till your memo we got, that got removed. And I have no clue why or how and what changed. That's why I asked for this water retained earnings system. Something changed between March 3rd, 22nd, and now that says we don't have $200,000 to put in there. And I think we do, and I think we owe it to the people in Long Meadow to not take the rates up like this, but take it up a little bit, knowing that it's going to keep going up every year. But I think my comment to you at the end of that meeting was, if you raise the rates by 22%, there's going to be a few of us not here at the next meeting. Because for those of you who haven't been here, water rates bring people into the Select Board. Maybe it won't this time, but it always has, especially when you do something that people don't like.
Well, I think that's guaranteed. I mean, if we, if we had, if it's 22% and we said, let's make it, I don't know, arbitrarily, 15%, it's still going to beat people's, but at least, you know, you know, we're having this conversation, we can point to them, like, obviously, we consider it very, very carefully, whatever we decide.
The, the increase is 86 cents, or 84 cents, if I'm correct, 84 cents per unit. That's the increase, okay? But, but of that 84 cents, 49 cents is from the Springfield Water Department, okay? So we can point to a large, I mean, we've got the numbers to show where that's coming from. You know, the issue to me, and one of the big things, was that we, we as a town, made a mistake when we borrowed 11.2 million dollars for a project, 11.5 million dollars for a project that's only costing 5.6 million.
That's not true. The project is not costing 5.6. I wanted to just clarify that.
How much is it costing?
That is just for the construction work. That is not for the design and engineering. You want to come up? Because I just want to be abundantly clear.
Fine. I'm willing to use the correct numbers.
I don't have the exact numbers in front of me. That's at least a million dollars more than that, plus 300,000. I think 1.3 million more than the 5.
Yeah. And it wasn't 5.5. I think the bid ended up coming in a little over 6, and that was just for the construction work. So we estimated, I think it was a million in design and engineering oversight. So we're, I mean, yeah, we're shy.
I'm corrected, I apologize. I stand corrected. The fact is, we borrowed money before we knew what the project was going to cost us. And that costs us money because you can't make money on the money you borrow. And that was the mistake of the town, and we shouldn't be doing that. We should wait till we know what projects cost before we borrow money, because we overborrowed. And now we're, that's part of the cost here. If you look at the, the interest cost on, on our water bill, it's gone up substantially. And, and I just think people ought to, ought to see and know that, and we ought to do what we can as a, as a Select Board, as a Water and Sewer Commission, to try to modify or moderate some of those, those issues. The bonded capital is, is up almost 40 cents a, a unit.
Yes. And I will also add, though, that we, the borrowing for the L Project work was higher than what was needed for the L Project work. However, if you recall, at the annual town meeting, that the excess bond money is being used for another massively needed water project on...
Magnolia.
Thank you.
1.5 million is the estimate currently.
So this is money that is being put back into the water utility. And then just real quick, it was July 5th, 2022, there was a memo from the interim finance director at the time with a pointed question, calling out this change to, once we went to quarterly billing, you were going to have to make a decision on whether you were using the new FY rates or the old FY rates. And the board had a pretty thorough conversation about it, so I'd just point you to that July 20, July 5th, 2022 meeting. And you decided to stay status quo with how it has always been done, which was, the new fiscal year starts the new rates. Meaning you're, you're back billing, you're billing the prior fiscal year at the new fiscal year rate. And there's a memo attached to that agenda.
And I will say, too, with the timing of this, we did vote at the fall special town meeting for the L Project bonding, knowing that the timing of when we put out the bid would probably bring us back a lower, a lower bid. And so that was a big consideration. And, you know, save, save the town money, and I think, like you guys said, we have an abundance of water projects. We've got, we've been able to use it towards Magnolia, and I'm sure if we decide that we would want to do more design and engineering for other water main projects in town, we will have this, you know, this money ready for it. So, I mean, it was...
I'd just point out that authorization to bond doesn't mean go out and borrow it before, you know, how much you need. We did authorize 11-point-something million.
Right.
It was the right thing to do at the time, we should, we would do it again, you know, but that, that doesn't mean that's what you go out and borrow the next day before you know how much.
Of course. Yeah, of course. But, I mean, but like I said, it was a timing issue of wanting to go out, to put bids in January and get a good, get a good bid. Go ahead, Andrew.
And do you think it's premature to either begin discussion or save time by either talking about the issues on the table, which are basically, should we change the way we're billing the second quarter of the year, you know, that issue with April, May, and June? And if we're going to decide what, how, what we're going to do with retained earnings, is that, like, for example, if we're going to mitigate the rate, that's a whole other discussion about what, what should the rate be, essentially?
Right.
So, and I'm kind of, I honestly, I obviously, like Josh, like all of us, I'm sure we see the virtues of whether we use save it and use it for capital planning, capital projects, or try to lower the rate, but it's going to be a discussion.
Yeah. It seems to me that the way that this discussion is headed, that it will be better for us to wait a month, get some more information, talk to the Springfield Water Commission. So if there's no further discussion...
I just want to make sure with, Lisa can weigh in, or Sean, if that, if that is correct, if it, if it's not going to affect anything billing-wise.
So even if we're retrousing the rate, I would just need it by, like, the 20th of July?
And the proposed meeting is before that, so. Okay. All right. So let's table that for now. And then move on to the second part of this, the Springfield Water Sewer Commission and Long Meadow Agreement, which I think is also incredibly complicated. And Lynn, if you want to take this one?
Yeah. So I think in some respects, you almost have to have these conversations at the same time, which is, I guess, what we're going to do. But the, what you see in your packet is the five-year agreement, because it's more thorough, so I wanted you to have that. That agreement was signed by a prior Select Board. In the subsequent one-year agreements, there has been inconsistency with who has signed them. Sometimes it's been a town manager, sometimes it's been a DPW director. And this year, when Sean presented me the five-year one and the one-year agreement, I looked at both side by side and determined that this was not a document that I have authority to sign, nor does the DPW director have the sign, authority to sign. So I sent them to Town Council, they're reviewing them, they did confer, or confirm that it needs to be the Water Sewer Commission that signs it. I don't have any history yet that you've ever signed these one-year agreements since that one expired, but I think it's really important for you to look through that five-year one, because it talks a lot about stuff that we've, you've brought up here for questions, like, how do they determine what share we pay? What, how much water we actually are purchasing from them? So that agreement is just still a one-year offering, that's all they want to do. I have not been directly involved yet in the conversations about extending that five-year agreement. I know Sean has had some initial conversations with them about that. I don't know if you want to talk about any of that now, or you want to wait till they're here?
Yeah. They've actually been the ones pushing to continue these one-year extensions, so it'd be something for you guys to approach with them, whether you want something more comprehensive from them when they come.
Okay. And so there's no...
There's nothing for you to do. Well, technically, you could vote the one-year agreement if you wanted to tonight, or the next meeting, because it operates on a fiscal year. So the one we have that was signed last year, but I'm not sure who, I haven't looked at that one, but that one expires the end of this month. I don't think they're going to shut us off, because the agreement actually technically isn't valid, because it hasn't been signed by anyone with authority to sign it. So I think you can wait until...
Did we get the one-year agreement, Lynn?
Yeah, it's attached to the agenda.
It's the very first document. So something to talk with them, too, at the next meeting, if they appear.
And just make sure you look through the five-year one, because it, it does go over a lot of what we've talked about.
Is that this one?
There's a, yeah, the extension is the first one, and then the second one is the longer one that expired. Yep.
Okay. Great. Anyone have anything to add on this? All right. Let's move along to the LCTV operating agreement. Who wants to tee this one up? Josh?
So I mentioned in our last meeting that there were some questions. We sent this around, this has been in the works for many years at this point. And we had a draft that we had all gone a little cross-eyed reading, and Mark brought up a question about funding and that the town wouldn't, wouldn't be obligated to fund beyond, fund a budget that went beyond what we actually got from Comcast. And that has been fixed after some back and forth. And we would have signed this, or we would have had this up on the agenda at the last meeting, but the LCTV was missing a couple filings with the state for nonprofit status. Two of those have been fixed, as far as we've been told by the town, and there's one pending from last year. So I guess we, if everyone's read this and is comfortable with it, I know that Jay Tellerman has read it, Liz Leiden at, at MTC, everyone is okay with it. But I don't think the board can, LCTV can sign it right now without being, without being up to date. They may be up to date now. It's not a public, as far as I know, it's not a publicly accessible database that they would register with. It's not like the Secretary of the Commonwealth, where I can look at, see if they're a valid corporation, which they are. So I guess it's up to the board if they want to vote tonight and to sign this when we are told it's on board, or they're up to date, which is what I would recommend, or if we want to vote to sign, or if we want to table it until they're in place. So that, I think that's the options, as far as I can see it.
And this would be us directing Lynn to sign?
Correct.
Correct. Okay. Go ahead, Mark.
Yeah, I'm trying to find the paragraph, and I sent it...
I think it's three.
To Lynn. That somewhere in here, it says, it says, "LCTV shall submit to the town a budget, and the town shall pay the, pay the budget," or something like that. I'm trying to find it. And, and my question is, you know, basically, do we really care what LCTV's budget is? Don't we just care that it says, "Funding from the town of Long Meadows cable access revenue." And we pay that amount, and that's our obligation? Because it says that we, they will submit a budget, and we will pay that budget to the extent that it doesn't exceed what we get. But as far as I'm concerned, LCTV can have a $20 million budget and raise money from doing video things and, you know, fundraisers and bake sales and have all this other revenue, which is great, because they're going to need it, because our share over time is going to go down as people cut the cord to cable TV. And so I'm questioning whether the comment should be, "LCTV will submit a, a budget to the, and the revenue shall be the town of Long Meadow," or it's, there's a line item. And I think what I said to Lynn is the following. It said, yeah, LCTV, it says, "LCTV shall provide the town with an annual budget as noted above, and the total, and the total amount of, which shall not exceed the funding received by the town pursuant to the Comcast license." That's what it says. "LCTV shall provide the town with an annual budget as noted above, the total amount of which shall not exceed the funding perceived by the town pursuant to the Comcast license." Why don't we change that to, "LCTV shall provide the town an annual budget in which the revenue line that enumerates the town's transfer funds shall not exceed the funding received by the town pursuant to the Comcast license." That gives them the authority to go, go raise, go run a bake sale.
Yeah. And we talked about this a lot, and I have thought about it. Do I care what LCTV budget is? A little bit, because they have a pot of money. And when that is exhausted, if they, if their budget was twice what they're, what they're receiving from us, from Comcast, if they, once they expend the rest of that money, they're, they're in big trouble. They, I know they have a cash reserve, we will start seeing that with the budget or with the reporting to us. the reporting to us. But we don't have a vested interest in LCTV continuing on, but we do have a vested interest in peg access to the town and showing up at our meetings. So, you know, could we do what you say? Yeah, we absolutely can. And I'd be fine with that, but I'm just explaining why it is what we arrived at. Because I am concerned that if the budget goes haywire, then...
But the way it's written, they don't have the authority in their budget to go have a bake sale.
Right, this is right, and this is not, this is not the language I propose. I propose the other part, that it can't be more than what we're paying, or that we are never, the town's never on the hook to pay more than what we get from Comcast. So that language, maybe Lynn remembers where it came from, that might have been from, but that's not what I propose.
No, for some reason, I feel like this came from their attorney.
That's what I'm wondering.
Yeah.
That really ties the hands of their independent board of directors. If I was on their independent board, because that means that, I mean, I know that they do, what, VCR transfers to digital, they do all that other stuff that shows revenue, I assume it brings in revenue, but none of that is allowed based on this, or impacts their budget, based on, either that, or they're going to end up with two separate budgets, and I think that would be problematic for the town.
Lynn, I'm looking back through our emails, and I...
It was their language.
Yeah, I didn't give that language, I don't know.
I just found it.
So I'm looking at track changes, where it had a budget, shall not, oh yeah, this is from, yeah, this came from them. Because I had, what originally was in there was, "An annual budget as noted above, the total amount, which shall not exceed the funding," or no, "which is subject to approval by the select board, and shall not exceed the funding received by the town pursuant to the Comcast license." That's subject to approval was what got cut out and added in the other language. So I don't know. The language I put in is that, "In the event that Comcast fails to make the required payments, town is under no obligation," et cetera. So I, and that's what I care about. I don't care about their budget, otherwise.
But the way it's written, Josh, we do care about, no, I'm not saying, well, you can put it in, but I'm just saying, the way it's written, the town cares about their budget.
Right.
And all we care about is the money that comes from Comcast, right?
Yeah, like I said, I'm fine with the language, if you want to put it in that way. It would concern me if it's in there, but I don't think that we have a say.
But what about a hybrid of, "LCTV shall provide the town an annual budget as noted above, the total amount of funding provided by the town shall not exceed the amount of provided from Comcast," something like that?
Yeah.
So you still get their budget?
Right, we want to get their whole budget, and we want to know how much they expect from us.
Absolutely, Lynn.
I think that's right. I just...
We can try, it doesn't mean...
I just read it as, their budget is limited to what we give them, and that's just...
It is, and...
I can't believe they'd approve that.
Well, this may have been, to be quite honest, I've been looking at the document, this may have just been a track changes issue, where it got cut, and everyone's sick of looking at it, and that may be it. Or they may want to limit it to what they got coming in.
But they don't know.
Right, I know, I know.
I mean, you're right, we really shouldn't care, but frankly, I can't imagine that they'd approve that.
Well, I'm...
If they've got an independent, a truly independent board.
I'm certainly happy with putting in the language that either of you said, I think they said the same thing, yeah.
And then we can go back to them with this and see if that's...
Well, I think if we, at this point, they would, I'm sure they'd be happy to hear this, and they'd be happy with the tone of this conversation. If everyone's comfortable voting with the caveat that they need to get in that last filing, I say we just vote on it and give it to them, and say, "Here's what you get." And I think they'll be happier with it, so.
Yeah, that's fine.
All right, somebody want to make a motion?
Oh, I'm moving on this.
What's your motion, Josh?
I move we approve the, oh, I lost my agenda. I move we approve the Long Meadow General, LCTV, let me start again. I move that we approve the agreement between the town of Long Meadow and Public Access Cable Television of Long Meadow Incorporated as presented on the agenda with the change to Section 7, the second sentence, which will read, "LCTV shall provide the town an annual budget as noted above, showing an appropriation from the town of Long Meadow at an amount no higher than the funding received by the town pursuant to the Comcast license," and continuing on from there.
Second.
You got it that way?
The video does.
All right, all those in favor? All right.
Standing agenda item.
Yes.
Sorry, Josh.
Okay, so next up, we've got an engagement letter from Attorney Kainoff. So Attorney Kainoff was our attorney representing the town of Long Meadow in our litigation with Eversource. He has switched law firms, and this is an engagement letter that basically is creating kind of, I guess, a new agreement between us and him, but following the same terms as previously agreed to. And so here, what we're looking for, Lynn, is a vote by the select board to direct you to sign the engagement letter?
I believe so.
Okay. I see just your signature line.
Yes, yes.
Okay, great. So any discussion on this? Anyone want to say anything?
Well, we talked about it a little bit before in executive session. The only thing I would, if anybody's curious, they will, if they're looking in the agenda, they'll see Attorney Kainoff's billing rate is $450 an hour. That is what he was always contracted with us at. That can change, but I don't think it will. And as far as we are aware, the amount that we voted on at town meeting a couple years ago now, we'll still cover this, we haven't been told otherwise.
Great.
We'll still cover the litigation, the EFS, up to the EFSB, which is what was discussed at the meeting.
So I will entertain a motion to direct the town manager to sign the letter of engagement with Attorney Kainoff.
So moved. Second.
All right, all those, any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor? All right, great. So moving on to new business, we are setting our 2024 Fall Special Town Meeting date and location. A memo was provided to the select board by our executive assistant, Mike Barbieri. The proposed date for our Fall Special Town Meeting is Tuesday, November 12th, at 7:00 PM, at the Long Meadow High School Gymnasium. I believe that this date was selected because we have a presidential election this year, and the presidential election will be November 5th, 2024. And obviously, with the amount of early voting, mail-in ballots, that puts a pretty big strain on our volunteers, as well as the town clerk's office. And by setting the Fall Special Town Meeting after the presidential election, they're not having to juggle all these different things while also trying to put on a special town, special town meeting, sorry, not special election, special town meeting. The memo also details when articles from all the departments and boards are due in the select board's office. The proposed date is Friday, September 27th, and then also, citizen petitions are also due by that same date. And then the bottom portion of the memo just provides a timeline of all the key dates before our Fall Special Town Meeting. Does anyone have anything they want to add to this, or explain anything? Mike, I don't know if there's anything I missed.
Thank you very much for everything, that obviously, that calendar is just tentative dates as we look ahead, but pretty accurate in terms of meeting dates.
Okay, great. Anyone want to add anything?
I'll make a motion to set this Fall, Special Fall Town Meeting for November 12th.
Second.
All right, any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor? All right. Okay, next up, our select board meeting schedule. And so this is the complete FY 2025 meeting schedule. I think if folks take a look at this, it reflects what we did last summer with a pared-down meeting schedule in the summer, where we moved to one meeting in July and one meeting in August. I think that it worked well for us last summer. Committees aren't meeting in the summer, there's usually less work for the select board to discuss in the summer. And I think this also is reflective of what other municipalities do, too, where they also have pared-down meeting schedules in the summer. And it's also, I think, just a reflection of people's schedules and their summer vacations and summer plans. And not just for the select board and the staff, but also folks that we want to bring and, you know, before the select board to speak. I know just personally that the August 19th meeting, I will have to miss, and so if there's any wiggle room there where we can make that the first Monday of August instead, if that doesn't make sense, you know, obviously, that's fine. And then the other thing that I just wanted to flag, too, is that it's, I know, our February meeting, the second meeting in February, always matches up with school vacation.
April, too.
Yeah, oh, and April, and April, too. And I was, you know, curious if we should also discuss modifying that at all. You know, I think now, too, we have a majority of the select board with children on school calendars. So those are just a couple of the points of discussion that I had, but open it up to other folks and anything that you want to say.
Beneath, my only question, and I'm not going, August doesn't, isn't a big deal, but in the February and April, if we were not to have them those weeks, what's the proposal?
Yeah, I don't know what the proposal, and especially the February one, we're in the thick of budget season, and that's a really difficult one to miss.
Could they be slightly moved, like, to the prior Thursday? Like, you can't have it the same week, obviously, because of the whole point of if you're away.
Right.
But you don't want to make it a full week ahead, because then it was just a week since your last meeting, so I don't know what the precedent is for...
Yeah, I don't know what kind of leeway.
Right, that's why I'm asking. What's the proposal?
Well, we could, you don't have to decide on those, we have some time, at least.
And also, there are some months that have five Mondays, so there's some flexibility with the range. And I think your point, we'd have to look into that and play around with a little bit.
Okay, so, you know, we could adopt this schedule tonight, but just maybe, Mike, if you could take a look to see if there's any kind of, you know, if there are any options there for us?
I'm also, I'm fine moving August, I could do August 5th, if we want to do that, but it depends on everyone's schedule. Because, you know, it seems silly to know, to set when we know at least one of us isn't going to be here.
I guess I should speak of, I'm away on the 5th, but I could just probably join by Zoom.
I'm on August 12th.
The 12th is in the middle, so that's closer.
Yeah, either of those, or 12.
Oh, the question is the school committee.
They meet on Tuesday, so if it's a Monday, we'll have no issue with that.
12's good.
Yeah, 12.
12's good.
Okay, great, thank you, guys. Great, well, I will entertain a motion, then.
Move we adopt the proposed fiscal year 2025 select board meeting schedule with the August 19th meeting moved to August 12th.
Second.
All right, any further discussion? All right, all those in favor? All right. Next is our select board liaison assignments discussion. So we've been provided a list of all of our liaison committee assignments. Obviously, the easiest way to do this would be to just give Andrew all of Tom's liaison assignments, but it does, you know, obviously, I want to open it up if anyone feels like they want to shift their liaison assignment for whatever reason.
Any trades?
Any trades, yeah.
First round draft.
Anyone? No? Okay, all right, so, yeah, I don't think we don't vote or anything, but just Andrew.
Sounds good.
Congratulations on your new liaison assignments.
Thank you.
All right, and then I will entertain a motion for the Long Meadow Adult Center Community Funds, two one-day liquor license applications for events to be held on July 11th from 5:00 to 7:00, and on July 25th from 5:00 to 7:30.
So moved. Second.
All right, any further discussion? All right, all those in favor? All those opposed? All right, and we've got correspondence, anybody have any comments on, any correspondence that we received?
Yeah, I have a question. Have we heard back from that, the West Springfield? Do we have any idea what that's about?
Yeah, no idea what it's about. I encourage them to reach out to the chair when we reorganize the board. So Beneath, I'm going to have them reach out to you to go over if it's a specific topic that is of interest to the board to bring forward as a topic. But I did let them know that resident comment sections are only permitted to residents who are given three minutes each, that's the information that I gave them. But I encourage them, if it's something that they wanted to reach out to our chair, then they're more than, you know, welcome to do that.
Thank you. And Mark, do you have something you want to?
No, that was it.
Oh, that was it, okay, great. And then, so if that's all, then we'll give Andrew the honors of moving to adjourn.
I move we adjourn.
Second. All in favor?
All those, hey, don't get...
Any discussion?
All those in favor?
Go Celtics.
Oh, go Celtics, yeah. Like a half hour, all those in favor? All right, all right, thank you, everyone.
Thank you.